Tired reception just before this and we had some wonderful memories and some happy thoughts and some nice desserts. So, thank you for your patience again for our late arrival. I am going to call this meeting to order. It is 6:50. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna apologize already because I was in Denali and I had snow there, but I brought the summer snow with me and my allergies do not like that. So, I'm sorry if I'm coughing over here and I sound congested. So, I need the approval of the meeting agenda, please. First Miranda, second by Russ. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. For the approval of the minutes, 4.1, regular meeting on May 21st, 2025. And first Russ, second Mary. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. Five, presentation awards and acknowledgements and correspondence, 5.1. We're gonna recognize the 2024 to 25 retirees. Would you like to, I know.
Two and three.
Chad, I just have to say, my son loved your class. You're welcome. I loved being in your class when I came to visit. It was a lot of fun.
So, tonight, we recognized 14 retirees with 280 years of collective service. Several of them are with us. So, I would like to ask Jennifer Strazabosco to please stand and come on forward. She has been with us as a teacher in Kelly School for 10 years. Jen Sensabaugh, oop, come on forward. She is our Director of Innovation and Grant Services and she has been with us for three years. And Krista Lewis, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. She's been with us for 23.5 years. Come on forward. We have just celebrated these folks and many others in the other room. So, I'm just gonna go through the list and recognize all of our retirees. Margaret Clark, Teaching Assistant at the High School, 32 years. Tammy Garrett, Teaching Assistant at the High School, 28 years. Jeanie Krubix, Senior Clerk Typist at the High School, 18 years. Gina Bermanch, Teaching Assistant at Lincoln School, 26 years. Lori Olszewski, Custodian at the High School, three years. Carol Jebelansky, Food Service, Lincoln School, 30 years. Sharon Hennessy, Speech Language Pathologist, Perkins School, 20 years. Rachel Cristolini, Language Teacher at the High School, 28 years. Warren Bouchard, our Food Service Director, six years. Michelle Backus, our Head Food Service Supervisor, 27 years. And Chris Anderson, a Counselor at Lincoln School, 25 years. We just again want to thank all of our retirees for their service to the Newark community.
You are very welcome. It was a pleasure. And I do have to say, I think I added to your collection. Six, public comments. At this time, public comments are invited from individuals who have signed up with Stacy Warren, District Clerk. Her information is as follows. Stacy.Warn@NewarkCSD.org or 332-3217 by noon on the day of the Board meeting and are speaking on a topic that pertains to an agenda item. Speakers must, I'm sorry, be a district resident, property owner, employee, and/or a parent of a current student. Wait to be called by the Board President and approach the podium to speak using the microphone. Identify yourself. Limit remarks to not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a group concern and supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Conduct themselves in a respectful or civil manner in accordance with the District's Code of Conduct and all applicable laws, regulations, and policies. Personal comments toward a member of the community, staff, student, or Board of Education member will not be considered appropriate. A representative will respond to each individual within five business days. Please note, the Board has the right to determine whether particular subjects are inappropriate for public comment. Tonight, we have Dave Colette, who has signed up about public comment rules.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I do appreciate being able to express myself. It's helpful for me and I hope it's not too awful for you. I'll be brief. We have rules with regard to, because this is a business meeting, we have rules and limitations, of course, on time and subject. And that's okay. I appreciate that. In just, in my own thinking, comparing something said at this meeting and the rules therefor and then things said elsewhere, I would like to commend to the Board and everyone else something that I have found to be extremely helpful and good for me. And that is the traditional Christian.
Dave.
Practice of prayer.
I'm not going to have you talk about religion. So, please, if you have a comment about the public comment rules, please stick to that.
There are rules for other things, too, that you express. And I'm just kinda comparing contrarily. Just compare.
I am sorry, but you need to stick to the public comment rules.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Seven, old business, new business, issues of public interest. 7.1, respond, acknowledge of previous public comments. We have none. 7.2, review Board Handbook for the 2025 to '26 revisions and discussion. Does anybody have any more additions that, topics that they want? Of course, the names and all that will change as pertinent in the data, but do we want to add anything more to our handbook?
That was pretty comprehensive and well organized, so you can find things easily. So, I couldn't find anything we could add, but might've missed some.
Okay. Good? Oh.
And I think when we do vote on it, that we vote on the concept, but anything in it that needs to be updated, names and phone numbers or whatever, can be updated immediately without having to come back to the Board.
Yeah.
Schedules and, you know, to try to keep it as a live document, sorry Stacy, so that, you know, if people pull it up, it is, it represents the truth.
Okay. I agree. So, do we need to put that in somewhere or just, we just agree to it? Okay. We all agree?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else with that? Nope. Good, good, good. Okay. Eight, verbal reports. 8.1 instructional. Krista and Donna.
All right, so I'll start. Really, the piece that I have to report is that I am overjoyed that Donna is joining us. We were awaiting her arrival and she's here. She started on Monday. We've had a lot of fun together so far this week. We're three days in. I think we're gonna be busy for the next month, but I'm learning a lot from her already and she's been able to start to make her way around the District and get a feel. And I think that this is an amazing hire and I'm very excited for our District to continue this next chapter under her leadership as well.
So, I feel, I'm sorry, this is the first time I've talked into the mic. Forgive me. I feel so fortunate to have a month with Krista. Like, she is a wealth of knowledge and I think about all the institutional knowledge that she has. So, I'm excited. We've had some fun. I've been spinning a little bit. This week, technology's been great, helping me get set up with my laptop and all, all the things tech. Everyone's been welcoming at District Office. And I went to the high school yesterday. I think we did our high school visit. Everyone's been welcoming and helpful, sat through some meetings, principal alignment, cabinet meeting, negotiations, jumped right in. So, I'm very excited to be here and I'm very thankful that I have, you know, all the folks that are supportive and it's gonna be great. It's all good. Thank you.
And welcome again. 8.2, finance. Greg.
Good evening. Again, transition has started, getting the position ready for the next person coming in at the end of the month, going through all the checklist for June as to items that need to be filed prior to June 30th. Preliminary audit starts the week of the 16th, so we're in full bloom on that. And next big thing is to clean the office. So...
8.3, human resources. Christine.
Good luck with, good luck with that, by the way. He saved a lot that we can reference, which is helpful. I have nothing further other. As you can see, HR is ramping up as usual around this time of year. We're very proud of the candidates we've been able to interview and the people we're bringing on our team. So, a lot of great things ahead.
Awesome. 8.4, Superintendent Susan.
On Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Special Olympics for our region. There was close to 1,000 kids participating in the Special Olympics. It was amazing. The kids enjoyed themselves. We were very lucky. It was one of the first times that it has not rained in this month. There was pools of water, but we worked around it. We put some ducks in there. And I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers who participate and our volunteers who make that day happen. We're really excited. Next year at Newark, we will be hosting the Special Olympics for two consecutive years. That date will be May 29th. We've already had the Special Olympic Committee here and we've started our planning. So, we will be fundraising and moving forward and it's already in the works. So, John Maston will be taking a big role in that because it's athletics and he's already organized it two times when he was in Bloomfield. So, we have some expertise and we learned a lot through the last two years at Marcus Whitman. So, they will be turning that over with many big files for us to be able to make that day wonderful here in Newark as well. Secondly, on Tuesday, I think it was yesterday, all the days blend together, yes, June 3rd, I attended the CTE Signing Day at Bosse's. And so, just like our kids sign for athletics, we wanted to recognize our students who sign for career opportunities with local businesses. And so, three of our students were recognized. Austin Bali from Newark, he is going to be employed with AB Installation and he is in the Advanced Manufacturing and Engineering Program. Matthew Fagner will be employed by Fagner's Property Maintenance and he was in the Diesel H E R O program. And Reed Haltnar signed with Wayne Finger Lakes Bosse's Energy Department and he was with Electrical Trades. And so, the kids come up, they sign just as if they were signing for athletics and their employers are with them right behind. And the employees and employers sign on separate lines and just recognize their career path. So, it was pretty awesome and it was a great celebration. They did a wonderful job. Our Assembly folks were there, Pam and Brian, and so it was very supportive. He's not in there. I knew there was one missing and I couldn't.
Yep.
Who did he sign with?
I don't know and I'm a bad aunt for not knowing.
So, Lucas George also signed. But for some reason, he's not, he's not listed in the manual.
He's Electrical Trade, so, signed with somebody. I'm a bad aunt. Shame. Okay.
And lastly, oops. Actually, two more things. Graduation is June 20th coming up rather quickly. Crossed fingers for good weather. And next week, on June 12th, we will be sending out a parent square tomorrow regarding a meeting for all stakeholders on the cell phone ban for next year to gather information. So, please look for that. And there will be a sign up for that if you wish to attend.
Thank you, Susan. Nine, review and approval of the consent agenda with the addendum that was added. First by Katie, second by Mary. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None.
It was a long one.
It was a long one.
It was a long one.
Mm-hmm.
It's good.
Good. And motion carried. So, Board Development Committee reports and monitoring of the Board. 10.1, Board Committee Meetings and Related Updates. Legislative Committee is meeting June 14th. Howard Dennis is doing kind of like a rough draft of the federal position paper. So, we're gonna review that very briefly and just set some goals for the survey of what, if anybody wants to change any of the state position or federal position, positions. Nisba, do you?
The deadline for submitting a resolution is July 14th, I think. And I can't quite think of, I can think of a whole bunch of things, but I, I'm not thinking of one at the moment, other than wondering if it would make sense if Nisba worked to try to deal with salaries in rural areas to make sure that they were comparable to the urban areas. Because New York State has discriminated against us for many, many years. And I think if we make it, my thought is if we made it as that ask, not just for more money, but that particular ask, it would be hard, harder for them to say no.
Sounds good.
Sue, do you have any comment on that?
Okay. We'll have to think of, I can ask at four county on the 14th. I'll send a message because I'll be running at nine. But if anybody else can go, can anybody go at 9:00 AM, June 14th? It's the Laurel House run. Can anybody go? It's on Zoom, so it's very, very easygoing group. So, if anybody can pop on, I'll send a note to Emily, my co-chair, on it and see if the committee can think of any words of how to word that specifically. So, four county, they have, and I don't have the dates in front of me, but they have their mandatory trainings coming up. Do you know them off the top of June?
Mandatory training is on the 28th.
8th of June.
Last Thursday, they had the meet and greet for the new candidates and Brandy and I were there. And it was, it was a good group.
Is there one more mandatory?
Feel sorry for Phelps, Clifton Springs Board. There was a candidate from Phelps, Clifton Springs. It was interesting. And a friend of Susan's was there.
Oh, really? Oh, I'm intrigued.
Isn't there two trainings?
Yes.
I'm pulling it up right now, actually.
June.
The mandatory training for administrative part is on the 28th and the fiscal is in July.
July.
July, July.
Yep. And then Nisba, of course, has theirs online that you can do anytime before June 30th of your first year.
And there's also Monroe and.
Monroe one. Yep. Wayne Finger Lakes Bosse's, Steve?
Nothing new from the last meeting, but I do want to add to it, Susan mentioned, you know, my career with the Labor Department. I got to work with the Apprenticeship Office. So, I saw a lot of young people in the skilled trades come out of Bosse's and become really good mechanics is a lot of words that they use. So, I wish good luck to the, you know, to our students.
Thank you, Steve. 10.2, Board of Education Subcommittee Reports. Did any committees meet? No? I don't think so. Next, okay. 10.3, the first reading of the following policies. There's a bunch of them, so I'm just gonna read them off. 1210, Board Members' Nomination and Election, that's been revised. 3120, School District Standards and Guidelines for Web Page Publishing, that's been revised. 3311, Notification of Disclosure of Employee Disciplinary Records, that's new. 5685, Maximum Temperature for School Buildings and Indoor Facilities, that's new. And 6110, Code of Ethics for Board Members and All District Personnel, that's been revised. So, I need a motion. First Mary, second Katie. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Any abstain? None. Motion carried. 11, Proposed Future Agenda Items, Ongoing Discussions, 11.1, the reorg meeting is gonna be July 9th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in the High School, LGI. Russ and I were talking over the phone the other day and August, it's the August 20th, we have a retreat and consent agenda. We were wondering if we would like to do something in July of just more so a onboarding with Brandy and go over our goals for the previous year. And then, when we have that retreat, we can finalize our goals for us and then be more extensive on Susan's goals. Does that sound good?
What's the date? The 20th?
I don't, I don't have, I was gonna discuss the date in July of when the Board.
We did it the third Wednesday.
The third Wednesday.
Unless there's a, because I know there's a lot of district office stuff that was on about that.
Yeah.
Retreats and stuff. Or is that your vacation?
Why don't you just send out an email?
Okay.
See what dates will work for everybody.
Yeah.
Because of the summer.
Yep. And we'll just do it earlier. We'll do it at 5:00. And it's just board stuff. So, you know, the full cabinet does not have to be here. It's just gonna be...
Is it the day of a board meeting?
It's not a day of a board meeting.
Because there's only one board meeting at the time.
Yes. Yeah. So, it would just be the Board to welcome Brandy and get her acclimated to our Board Handbook, super eval, go over that, how that system works and, you know, do more of a introduction. Onboarding, onboarding is a good word.
So, you need me there or no?
Okay. So, I'll send out an email.
Maybe. What happens if she's on vacation?
So, yep. Okay.
Well, before adjournment, I'd like to say, on behalf of the Instructional Committee, you know, it's a great pleasure to go into the schools and actually see what people are doing. And Krista made it real easy and informative. We weren't just watching what happened. She was able to link all the interaction between the different schools and the consistency between the five buildings and also speak about all the changes in the educational system and, in an applied way, so it made sense for what we were seeing. So, and these were Monday mornings and she was, had the big smile going for her. So, it was a real treat. So, thank you.
Yes.
I told her, I told her, you're in charge of that one.
Okay. I need a motion to go into an executive session to discuss an employment of a particular person or persons. First by Steve, second by Russ. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None.
And can the student come up?
Yep.
You can come up, honey.
Yep.